And I think that was one of the arguments that I had, that the developer whose development should, I think it was four, he was gonna put in his subdivision affordable.
The county law says that you have to take into consideration ten percent
Yes, right.
of the actual build out that you can have and build the affordable units.
But that was, that was the argument that the town board had. That they wanted to keep the affordable housing downtown and not on South Avenue. So...
The county ended up buying the property anyway.
The county ended up buying the building.
The subdivision was based on the yield with the affordable housing units.
But I think it's affordable housing should go anywhere, but they're building a subdivision.
Ownership. We need ownership of affordable housing.
Well, they call it workforce housing anyways.
I'm changing it to millennial housing.
The county has a law on it.
I'm changing workforce, you heard it here first folks, to millennial housing. I'm tired of workforce housing. I'm tired of all these euphemisms. This is housing for my children so they move out and go someplace. Millennial housing. Exactly. You understand.
I mean, I like this, I like the concept of this. I think we really does this in a lot of ways through a lot of other mechanisms, whether it's TDRs, BDRs, clusters, all those things that we do to try to make neighborhoods and create the environment that we want on the North Port. I think a lot of this was written probably to force other towns' hands to start doing the same thing that we've been doing all along. So I don't know whether this, I mean, I guess we have to adopt some sort of measure to...
I think that's the question. What is it that you want us to do?
Well, I think we should adopt this. Then we have no problem.
And with the discretion, is that the way you'd like it to?
I guess the discretion works because I could see a developer putting up McMansions, and they happen periodically in this town, are not gonna wanna put up a thirty-five-hundred square foot house.
Something in Southampton right now.
And then all of a sudden they've gotta put a, you know, my size house, a fourteen-hundred, thirteen-hundred-and-eighty square foot house next to it.
Ooh, you got a bigger house than me.
Thirteen-hundred-and-eighty square feet.
That's what's happening in Southampton right now.
I just made it. My house is almost illegal.
Minimum of twelve something, right?
Almost, almost, I'm almost illegal. So, I mean, the developer might turn around and say, I don't, I'd rather just pay you the money because I'm not, that doesn't fit into the character of what I'm doing.
It's gonna come back to you on each occasion because there has to be an agreement between, a written agreement between the developer and the town, and you're the only entity that can bind the town that says either extra units, money. If you don't use the money for three years that you collect into this trust fund, you have to create a special trust fund, put the money in the trust fund. If you don't use it within three years, it goes to the Long Island Housing Partnership.
Oh, we will use it.
Yeah, but how do you...
No, well, we have to use it for affordable housing though, correct?
Yeah, but how do you, how do you decide, like, which building is gonna get that money? I guess whatever the proposal is that comes to the town board at the time. So if someone comes in and there's a building that they want to rehab and they say it's workforce housing or an existing building that's already workforce housing, the town can give them the money to...
In my mind, you could have some rules and guidelines where I could come to you and say, my house is dilapidated. It's a rented, dilapidated rental house. I would like to sell it to a workforce housing qualified person. It's gonna cost forty-two thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars to do that, and the maximum I can sell it to the person is two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars. And I'm gonna now find that workforce housing person and you would agree to do it.
Well, do you think that before we adopt this, we should have a policy as to how those applications for the money get vetted?
Well, you're gonna have to put that in your...
Part of the statute. It's part of what we're doing.
It has to be in the statute.
It doesn't have to be in this one. All the, what we're seeking is just to get this adopted.
First, the policy, just as we did with the clean water.
And I think we already have certain programs in the town, for example, with the mobile home parks where we go in and put in eighty-eight Rams.
I was just gonna say that. I think through the CDA we have programs that would certainly fund.
Right.
And we can use the, this money to help that program.
As long as they end up owned by a qualified workforce housing.
So, if there was additional programs out there, we can just...
Well, there are other programs that you have to have a lottery. You tell them, this doesn't need a lottery then.
But you could also, John, you wouldn't even have to do a lottery. You could use it as a grant to, like, David Gallo's building these apartments.
Or evolving loan program with, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel.
Just like, just like, oh, that's what you got from somewhere. You got those grants.
We, we got the grants from the county.
Same difference.
But...
Just, just...
This, David Gallo's is low-income housing tax credits, federal tax credits. No, it's not, Sean. It's called low-income housing tax credits.
Okay, well...
It was before today.
We will draft, we will draft the legislation with the discretion.
I would want this for housing, not apartment buildings.
Okay.
And I would...
What about Second Street? I think that whole Second, Third, maybe we identify the urban renewal area as the target area where we wanna do it.
That's what I'm saying.
That's, yes, I would go along with that.
Single-family housing, because clearly in a subdivision, it's single-family housing. If you're telling them to build it somewhere else, it would logically be a single-family house.
So maybe we tie it, my thought, really Jill's thought, but...
No, really Dick's thought.
Dick's thought. Okay, so that's where it went. If we tied it to the urban renewal area, which we tie a lot of stuff to, we could really put some money into that community to upgrade those houses and get them out of TUCOs and other landlords. I'm not saying it negative. I'm just saying, please, a landlord that owns property because he, there'd be an incentive for him to sell it to somebody that's gonna put workforce housing in.
This gives us the opportunity for...
Grants he wouldn't be entitled to.
This law gives us the opportunity for a fund source.
Yes, I'd like to see an economic analysis, and I would like to, if we were going to collect money, put it towards owner occupied. That's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, that's what we're saying.
What economic analysis you're gonna show? We haven't done anything yet.
No, no, but what you're saying is, you know, Tucio, if he's got this house and needs to be fixed up...
No, no, we're saying, if a real estate developer has a house, he's renting it. Now, if somebody wants to come and buy that house that's in this category, he'd come to us and say, listen, I wanna sell it to this guy. He feels he's in this category, but it's gonna cost me thirty-five thousand to fix it up. And we could then say, okay, we'll give you a thirty-five thousand to fix it up, but you have to sell it as an affordable or a millennial or workforce housing, whichever we declare it as.
But you'd have to qualify the people that are buying the house, and then you'd have to have a minimum requirement of ownership from that person
And it has to stay...
For ten years.
It has to be perpetual. According, from what I read here, it's perpetual.
It's in, whatever in the law will have to follow.
And that person goes to sell it, they have to sell it to another.
But I think, yes, if you wait for us to give grants to help these houses that they wanna sell to affordable millennials...
It's not unlike Habitat United with houses where you have Sweattick Green, you have Morgues that rides with it, you can't sell them. All those rules are there.
All right, so this is, before you leave unscathed, what I would, what I think we're saying is, you know, let's make sure we're in agreement. We do it in the urban renewal area so, because that's a targeted area that we really could use an infusion of cash. The one thing that I would say, that it goes to the single-family houses, but in, just in case there's no, nobody that comes forward, we don't wanna lose the money for three years. There's gotta be a provision in there that, at the end of two years, the money is eligible for grants to apartments or something, because we don't wanna lose it.
Yeah, you don't wanna lose the money. Yeah, I agree with you.
For mobile home, for part of the patrol program, something with the CDA where people are fixing their houses?
Well, that's different because it's not workforce housing, millennial housing.
Tell some of the seniors it's not workforce housing. They live it on six hundred a month.
Well, that's what Dick Geller said, is that if they're not working, then they're not eligible. So...
Right. The county thinks it's workforce housing.
Yeah, and I think we just, respectfully, I don't think we just limit to the urban renewal area. We include all the options, and then it's up to you to decide how it's done.
I disagree with the urban renewal area because I know that there's some houses in Timber Park. I know that there's houses scattered throughout our town that are falling apart, that are being foreclosed on. And if somebody that qualifies for workforce housing can qualify for one of those houses, that they should be eligible for this money also. I think it's, I think that it should be open up townwide, but I think that we should have a scoring program with points as to which house may be eligible for the money.
This law doesn't have to be specified how the money is used. This is just not enacting the enabling legislation. That's all it does. The next step is where you decide.
We wanna both at the same time.
Yes, that's what I was saying, Sean.
You'd want both at the same time.
Yeah.
Jeff, I like the idea of the urban renewal area because it's feeding cash into an area that really could use some cash. I, but there has to be a stopgap. Maybe it is the senior communities. We don't wanna lose it. What does the rest of the board think? Jody wants it the townwide. Tim, what do you think?
You may not have anybody, you may not have anybody in an urban renewal that's willing to sell.
That's why I didn't have...
Well, that's what we said. They will go to the senior community.
Dick said it has to be workforce.
Fifty-eight now, we have a big senior, we have a big community of course.
It's all income eligibility requirement. That's it.
It's income eligibility.
We have a community of course, McDonald's, that may someday need money for the, for the living of people in there when they sell. They have to fix these places up. So I would think that, yeah.
You're gonna have public hearings on this and everything.
Yeah, I would open it up townwide.
Okay, so we have one townwide, two urban renewal with, we have to have a stopgap to get the money out so we don't lose it. So we could try to do it to seniors if it works.
I don't mind having a priority to urban renewal, but certainly you're gonna have caveats to the different areas. But, I mean, that's really not a...
Yeah, I agree with Jim.
But my question is this, Jeff. Let's say we enacted this nine years ago, or whenever Fed dealer decided to get Southampton to get finally going or what they have to do.
Right.
How much, I mean, there's not a lot of that type of development going on right now, and we're towards the end of the master plan. We're actual, those types of things are gonna be sunsetting, you know, within a decade. How much money do you think this may generate, or we might have lost?
Not, we wouldn't have lost any.
Not a heck of a lot.
No, we have doctors' beds.
Millions of dollars coming.
Subdivision's for doctors' beds.
With the one that we have now, it'd be about one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars just off the one subdivision.
So we haven't had any of that.
No qualified patients.
So it's not like it's...
It's not a lot of money, but if you, if you have a lot of law plays that need to be done, somebody needs to fix up their...
It's not millions of dollars.
No.
But I like, I like what Jim said about how you prioritize urban, prioritize urban renewal, you prioritize senior if they qualify, and then it's open up to the town, just to leave the opportunities open.
That's always easy to find.
Because somebody maybe living next to a dilapidated house for years, he wants to get in and...
You have consensus now.
There's always time to spend money.
Like, and he's still sitting down. He doesn't understand.
My dad was in the coffee business and he said, what's the best thing to say? They'll take you, stand up and say thank you.
Before they change their mind. Mr. Bean, Mr. Bean.
Jeff, you know what you have to do. Three prior... Code enforcement, Kazakhovich and Thomas. Where are you going? Oh, I thought you were walking out. Dawn. Can you call, uh... Are you wanting me to call Dawn?
Probably even the night.
Did she say me or her?
I think she said she was gonna go call her.
The granting of density bonus shall not require an inner of itself, but probably has a plan in it.
Local government.
John, please, and Dawn down?
This is merely to get Southampton these days.
Okay.
That's why this is...
Do you wanna have Jim talk about the cardboard boat race?
Jim, talk about the cardboard boat race. I don't see it on here.
Well, just talk about it.
August, August the sixth, they did a little article in one of the online papers. August sixth is the new date for the cardboard boat race. The tide shows us a high tide right around noon time, which is good. We don't have to, if there are any fishes, they'll stay on the bottom, but it's a good time of the year. It's in between July fourth and the Polish fair, so it's a pretty quiet time of the summer. Bid, along with the Chamber of Commerce, Tim Hubbard and I met with them, and they've got a pretty nice schedule going. So it's gonna be, all hands on deck. It's gonna be a good, a good time. So August sixth is the date. It's a new, because it's Sunday, it'll be a noon start in respect to the churches, downtown churches that have services in the morning. And we invite all to come. You'll see more...
You're not gonna cancel it.
I personally can't cancel it on my own. It's not up to me, so...
All right, okay.
I just wanna bring something while we're waiting. The IDA is one member short. We put out something for anybody that wanted to join the IDA.
Got a resume.
We did not get anything. The IDA got one.
I'm covering it here.
No, no. You didn't let me finish.
Oh, you said not one. Okay.
You say I interrupt you. Okay.
It's a long expression.
The IDA got one application from this gentleman here. They, they, they know him. They liked him. So I'm bringing, I think I gave a copy to everybody here, and Carissa's making an appointment for him to come in.
Who's on the screening committee? It's not screening, interview committee.
I'm having the president of the IDA.
Right.
I'm having Tracy come in.
Right.
Hello.
You and what I'm...
And me and...
Okay, good. That's fine.
Okay.
Do the interviews and give us a recommendation.
They'll give you a recommendation on him. Okay? Is that okay?
Got one resume, background. We can always make us the IDA. That's what was my, my thought, but Jill, see, look, politically, Jill's like, stop it.
I don't think anybody wants to join that.
Do you guys want to...
Okay.
Code enforcement, what are we discussing?
So just a...
Just an update on make extra for the press, but I can give my...
Shh. Momentum. So I just wanted to, you know, I've been doing this for six months now with the help of Jody and the code enforcement staff, and I just think the board ought to know where we're at. I think what the average response time is for a complaint and how basically we need to add some staff. So, I was gonna cut to the chase, and you can hit me over the head now, but I think, you know, we did, we did some stats collection, and I think Richie put together all of the open complaints, which we currently have, and there are three hundred of them. Many of them are serious types of complaints, where we have some overcrowded housing, some building code violations that are serious. And then there are some that are less serious, like grass cutting or, you know, property maintenance issues.
Some unregistered vehicles.
Unregistered vehicles and things like that. So, but they run the gamut and...
We're going with the neighborhood.
Just to give you an idea, you know, when I was here before, we had three full-time people working on. We couldn't keep up then. Now we have two full-time people. And, nah, you'd be surprised.
I, yeah. He did. Sorry.
Anyway, so that's a whole nother issue, but we wanted to just kind of address, you know, just do some basic math. And so we have three hundred complaints, and Rich kind of figured his average time, you know, he or Nicole in responding to a complaint, average time is an hour and thirty minutes. So if he, if that gives you an idea of how, how many we have, we get, how many a week? Ten, fifteen a week new?
Ten, ten to fifteen a week.
New. Basically, the way this works, we never get close to catching up. And the complaints get more serious as, you know, as, over the past six years that I've been gone, I've seen them go from, we had a lot of, you know...
What happened to the concept of using our part-time police officers who are already trained so that we have a whole contingent of people that can do this?
Well, we do do that already to some degree. So, for instance, they've been extremely cooperative with us in handling, doing investigative type of work. So, for instance, if I need somebody, because we, as, I don't wanna talk too loud about not having anybody. But we have...
Yeah, I'm not quite sure this is the right format.
There are times...
But let me ask you a question. We used to get a report quarterly on what code is doing, what the remedies were, whether they were, the court said, okay, no fine, as long as you fix this up, right? Did it go to Supreme Court? We don't get that anymore. Do you, do you think, how much, let me ask you a question. Between getting the remedy fixed and no fine, or just a fine, what does the town realize, other than the community being fixed up? Right? That we don't have a dilapidated house next to a nice house? Or that we get a fine and that comes to the coffers of the town and it doesn't go to the state?
Well, the IPS system that you all have access to will give you a listing of all the actions that are taking place on all of these complaints.
Don't have access to that anymore.
You, you can, we can get you access. Anytime you need information on code, we have it all now at our fingertips, and the IPS system has been very helpful in getting it organized.
I could, I could, six months ago.
Just to see how we're doing and...
And then when, when, if someone calls me about the same property, and I haven't spoken to Rich or Nicole about it, I can check IPS on that address and see instantly what the latest complaint was, what was done with it, you know, what the follow-up is, and who spoke to who, and any documents that are...
What the court date is.
This is why we don't have to bother you guys all the time.
You know, and you have to keep in mind here that we're not just doing code enforcement. We're doing rental housing too.
Yeah, that, so we're, we really have a half, we have one and a half people versus two.
We have over a thousand plus around those.
But you do inspections too, right, on rentals?
Look at the work that just got road is taking.
That's just one small little area we're talking about.
Doing the rentals.
Well, I always thought that, that a code officer would eventually pay for himself down the road.
Listen, I first started seventeen years ago.
By beautify, beautifying the town and the fine money that he brings in.
And I think that's a very fair point, and let me just take you a little bit further on that. So just to give you an example, some of our Supreme, our, our town code fines are nicely structured currently, and we are able to collect decent fines on almost everything we write. I mean, there are times when people come into court, they get a rental permit violation somehow or another. They had a permit, they didn't show it, or we didn't, something got miscoordinated. Those, sometimes we dismiss the ticket on proof, depending if it's a parking registration ticket. However, between the fire marshals, what they're writing and what code is, is writing, we have a very nice amount of, a dollar amount that we're collecting. Plus, we get rental permit fees.
Which we doubled in order to pay for computer software and for more code enforcement.
But more importantly, I think, one of the things that we really need to focus on is, is, is that when we have an overcrowded house, that has impacts to the school district. So we can't always control, or we can't always see it necessarily in our town tax bill, but there would be other impacts that we would have. Plus, people would not be living in an unsafe condition, which is a very huge problem. We don't ever want that, especially children and people who have limited means to respond to those things themselves or have other concerns. So it's our job to do that for them. So that's an important thing that we need to keep in mind. Also, what, now that we're bringing more Supreme Court actions, which we really need to do, because people don't understand, and there are a lot of people who are very resistant, or will just pay town code tickets. A thousand dollars is not a big deal. Two thousand dollars is not a big deal.
Of course, they're doing business.
But when the fine is ten to fifteen to twenty, up to a hundred thousand dollars, which we've, we've alleged in some of the Supreme Court actions that we've commenced, which are been ten to fifteen, about ten at this point we've commenced. We have authorized another four. That's when people start to pay attention, and that's when we really, those are the things we really need to be strong on. And if we're not, we kinda get walked on. So I think just continuing the momentum that we've developed in the last few months is important, and I think that, just so that you understand the time it takes to respond to something, and we have two people in twenty-eight square miles, and we have one, if we have Nicole over on the, you know, northeast part of town and the complaints on the south, we have a half-hour travel time just to get there, and a half-hour travel time, not to, not to mention the paperwork that's involved.
So this is why I said several months ago, we have ten part-time police officers. We can run them, and we run them full-time from Memorial Day to Labor Day. After Labor, between Labor Day and Memorial Day, we can't run them as police officers. They're all can do your job if you train them in the code.
They're not really code enforcement officials.
Well, no, they have to be code enforcement officers.
You've got to train them in the code enforcement.
Can I just...
Can you let me finish? So you, I don't understand why nobody has, you have ten bodies that probably would be willing to do code enforcement. It's not, we could send them to the classes. I'm sure they'd be very interested in additional work. I will put it in the budget for next year for a full-time code enforcement officer. But what the town board has to understand, you've already overspent the two thousand seventeen budget by a hundred thousand dollars, more than a hundred thousand dollars.
For what?
For the gas pumps that we had to upgrade because they weren't working, and, and that's only half the gas pumps. And we took the grant for that boat, for the pump-out boat, which is a matching grant. So there's a hundred thousand. You've already overspent the budget. You only put two hundred in reserve last year. So it's not like there's money for this, or it's not like there's money for code enforcement, but the police department has these bodies.
Okay. Are you done?
They're responding to the police call.
So now, Rich, Rich, hold on one second.
When you're a police officer...
Hold on, hold on one second.
That's not what they're responding to. They, what I said was, you would take the police department officers, you would meet with them with the police department, you would train them in code enforcement and send them out as code enforcement officers.
If I can say now, the police are doing investigative work. So if we get reports of an overcrowded house where there's ten cars parked in the front lawn and in the sides and in the back of the house, then police are going out and investigating that. To take our police department officers and give them overtime to go on code enforcement classes. You're saying that you're gonna take them off the street and they're going to...
I never, where do you hear this? I didn't say...
You're saying, train them in code enforcement. How do you train them in code enforcement?
Yeah, but a part-timer's schedule is just that. It's part-time, and if they're only getting ten hours a week at the police department, they probably, and I can speak, 'cause I was a part-time officer for many years, I would've jumped on this because I would've been looking to make some extra money, and it's semi-related to your police work. And to me, it makes sense because if the part-timer responds to a call or is at a house where it's overcrowded or whatever, he's already got a jumpstart on what he can do with the code enforcement part of this, and I think it's, it's a good way to get bodies quick. You need help. I understand that.
But what is involved in...
If they're co-trained as, which they're already police officers, and we get them trained as code enforcement officers, you have a pick of using people all the time. And until we can get you full-time help, I think it's a great idea.
Rich attends all-day classes for three days in order to learn code enforcement. You can't just teach someone, and they have to be certified. They have to be a certified code enforcement officer.
It is a different job, but it's, it's parallel in many areas.
Yes, John, you're right.
And to get them, once you get them certified, now you've got them, and who knows? One of those guys may be your full-time...
The state certifies them.
That's fine. That's fine.
That's why you only had two code enforcement officers in the past.
So, can I say something? Let me finish. Quality of life is one of the most important things. If, if you want, if, if I'm you, and I'm the liaison to this, I'm taking those three hundred complaints, I'm sitting down with the police chief and those ten officers, I'm finding out who's interested in them and the quality, qualifications of them as police officers straight away to investigate some of the stuff, which some of them they can without being code enforcement. I'm positive of that. And if, to the extent they can, you're doling those out immediately to those officers.
I'm just a quick, quick question, 'cause I'm interested in exploring that. If you have a part-time police officer and they're, they wouldn't be assigned to us, they'd be assigned to the police department.
Right, be assigned to you.
So how does, how does that work vehicle...
When they're working as a part-time police officer, they're assigned to the police department. When they're code enforcement, they're assigned to you.
So how would they, 'cause we don't have a, what vehicle would they use to do their...
Not only that, but they're, our part-timers can only...
No, I'm legitimately asking that question. I don't know how that would work.
Our part-timers can only work seventeen and a half hours a week. So you're gonna pull them off from downtown so that they can go do code enforcement?
No, no, no. You don't understand. He's saying, when they're police officers, they're police officers. But if they go to a complaint and see something, they could also do a code violation. They're not gonna take someone off the main street. They go look at five-four-two Oswald Avenue. His job at that time was for the police. In the wintertime, or when he's not working, he can then work for code and say, okay, I'm a code officer now, not a police officer, but he is a police officer twenty-four hours a day. If he sees something, he'll have to take action, but he'll be a code officer at that time for the town.
But if you're gonna pay the salary, the extra salary...
See, that's the thing I'm...
Hold on one second. If, if you're gonna pay the salary for him to be a part-time police officer and then to be a part-time code enforcement officer, why wouldn't you just hire somebody that's already a code enforcement officer that's licensed by the state?
Well, you don't have to pay him more benefits. You don't have to put him in retirement.
That's what we were hoping to do. And one of the things we need is a Spanish-speaking person.
Healthcare, 'cause he's already in the healthcare. So you're saving on the benefits. So you're saving about thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars per person between a part-time person and a full-time person.
You don't need to pay them benefits if they're retired code enforcement officer.
Retirement is twenty percent of what they make, you know, and that's all you have the rest of it.
You don't need to pay them benefits if they're retired code enforcement officer.
We can talk more about the how we do, how we do it part of it. I think it's just important that you know what we're doing and what we think we need to do to do what you need to have done.
Dawn, can you do me a favor? Can you get the requirements to be certified by the state as code...
Twenty-four hours initially.
Eh?
Is it twenty-four hours initially? Or is that every year you do twenty-four?
It's two weeks classes.
Well, I... We know what we're dealing with. We don't know what we're dealing with now. We're flipping up and down. We don't know what we're dealing with. So can you do that, please?
I, I get it. The town's on notice. We know. We know it has to be done. We know it's woefully on demand. Shaun's already said that next year we're gonna look at code enforcement, hopefully, well, he already made a promise. He's on budget for it.
Well, do what I can to put something in person.
There is a stopgap that has to happen, and I can tell you, part-time police officers certified by the New York State Municipal Police Department, a municipal, Board of Municipal...
BMP.
BMP, Bureau of Municipal Police. They're certified by the state as police officers. I'm sure that carries some weight.
Well, do they know how, do they know...
They can activate all town codes.
Do they know how high railing has to be on a stairwell, or how much the spindles, the distance between the spindles?
But I can look it up.
Wetland violations.
You have to be licensed to know that. Otherwise, when you take them...
We all can't talk at the same time.
I don't buy it. I don't buy it.
But that's why they would have to be trained.
Okay, you're now called to.
That's, that's a solution. I don't know financially what works.
What I'm saying is, is a stopgap, it's probably a good idea to, I always been saying, cross-train police, even police officers can do code enforcement. You don't have to be a code enforcement officer. If I'm a cop out in the street and I see something happen, I can write it down.
They need to be code enforcement officers.
You're doing two different categories now.
Can I say one thing? 'Cause I think the conversation's...
Can I say one thing? Because I think the conversation's getting way off base.
Everybody wants to weigh in.
I think it's ridiculous. They'll pay for themselves, the code enforcement officers.
They don't.
And our quality of life in this town is being destroyed every day because people are leaving their houses, and investors are coming in and buying them up and loading them up with people. That's affecting our hospital, our school district, and we need to do something now.
I'm surprised you're not jumping all over this. This is a great idea.
Immediately into code enforcement.
It's a great idea.
But you're paying them extra.
That's a possible solution.
Wait, 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 wait. Hold on. This is a start. We, we have to start someplace.
Correct. That's, that's all we're doing. Just talking about...
This is a start.
Here's the dilemma.
Right? And then, we can hire, we can hire a code full-time if he puts it in the budget. But this is a start. Let's start this project and see how it comes out.
I would be happy with a part-timer. I don't care. You don't have to do it full-time.
We really could benefit from a Spanish-speaking person.
And we have Spanish-speaking part-time police officers.
So, that could be a answer.
This is what I'd like to do. I'd like to have a meeting with the chief and the ten part-time police officers, and the town attorney, or wherever you wind up. And I would like to, because we, we might put this to bed right away. You might have ten saying, no, I'm not doing that, and that's it.
Well, that's where I was going to go. There's a couple of things. You made a statement that the police can write any, any violation of town code. I think that's a given. The next thing that's a given is they're not, they may or may not be a certified code enforcement officer. So, that part of it will not be able to be handled to the extent that a certified code officer can. Who's gone through the Department of State training, who goes through the annual training and does that.
Yes.
What I'm hearing is that there's a willingness for the board to give us sort of a open book or carte blanche to go get the part-time officers to utilize them on weekends. So, that's gonna be a budgetary issue. But if, we're hearing that that's something that you're allowing us to do.
We're allowing you to...
And we're saying, we're gonna, we're gonna go to the police department and see if we can do that, then that's, as you say, a stopgap measure.
It's a stopgap. It's a spaghetti.
We just, we just understand there's gonna be financial implications of bugs and implications of that.
But you can't, you have three hundred complaints. This is quality of life. If I hire one part-time police officer, I'm not getting anywhere through those three hundred complaints. If I hire two part-time enforcement, rather, I'm not getting anywhere through those three hundred complaints.
Pretty close.
You're getting closer, though.
If you could break them up now to say, police officer could, they're not doing wetlands. I get it, Richie. But police officer could probably do these, the wetlands, the really technical stuff, and the apartment inspections and building inspections you and Nicole have to do. You may be able to knock off a hundred and fifty complaints in a couple of weeks.
Zoning use? Can they do zoning?
No, no, but they can probably...
Richie, we're not going, I, I understand your job. I understand your job. But I'm saying to you that if we could put ten people on the ground right now, that's probably more than the town attorney has.
Rich, we're talking about the, the, the ten inches of grass growing up, the, the twenty-four inches.
They can do that.
They can do that. A house that's not boarded up, that is unsafe, they can go and look and say, okay, they, they need to board this house up. So, they, they can do those things without getting into constructional stuff, that they need the expertise. Don't forget, but don't forget, Shaun, our building department, our code officers.
There's letters that have to be sent out.
And they write many tickets.
And our fire marshal's code officers.
They write many tickets.
So, so, we do have, we do have other people, uh, you know, helping you guys. But we need additional help, just for what, the list you have.
It may turn out, this whole exercise and all this talking might be a moot point. So, let's look into it for a stopgap. If it doesn't work, then we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to go further.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind investigating it to make sure that it's, you know, that it can function for us. That's fine, but we need to really kind of put it together.
Yeah, and I'd like to be at that meeting also.
I was hoping we put that together six months ago, when I brought it up, or whatever it was.
Well, we are using police, Shaun, but you didn't, never mentioned, we're a time, we're...
I always mention, always...
We're coordinating with them nicely, and they are doing a lot of investigative work there overnight and on the weekends, which is great.
We'll know for a fact a month from now.
Are you the liaison to the police?
Because that's the same thing as, as downtown, with the police office.
I want on code enforcement also.
The chief says they have to be certified tire markers, where they go to court. I assume that a police officer with the court, it has to be certified to do this.
Right.
So, that's why I'm saying that we have to find out what is to certify them.
What is this? Is this what you wanted to do?
Let's not, let's finish, wait, let's finish this up. So, Jody, Dawn, and Tim is the liaison to the police department. I'm actually somebody that knows what the police do, because I really, I mean, I know what they do, but I don't know the qualifications of the police certificate that you have, are gonna sit down with the police chief, and I think you gotta bring the ten part-timers in to see if there's any interest. If they all say, absolutely not, I don't want to do this, then it's over. But if you got four, or five, or six of them, then start to break down the list of what they can do. And I, I'm going to put code enforcement in. It's the one position I, I know we need.
So, it's, it's okay budgetary to hire these ten pu, part-time police officers to do...
It's not okay budgetary either way. What I'm saying is, you have a serious backlog that hiring one part-timer or two part-timers ain't never getting you there at the rate that you're saying you're taking code complaints in. So, if you can throw five, six, eight police officers immediately at the program, you've solved your problem much more quickly. Because grass, Richie, grass, tall grass, that's a, you visit that. You write the ticket. You're done. That complaint's over.
No, it's not. You gotta do a resolution. If they don't cut it, you gotta go back. You gotta do a resolution.
And that, but that's done from your perspective. A cop can do that. You think the cop can't do that?
I don't think he's going to draft resolutions.
He can write a ticket.
He can write a ticket. Anybody can write a ticket. I understand that. But there's a lot of paperwork on the backend that they have to do.
Which is what this brings up.
They would have to do it. You would have to train them, Dawn. How to do it. They, they type up complaints, criminal complaints.
This is how we're...
So, if they type the criminal complaints up, they can type a resolution up for, uh, uh, a minor infraction.
How are you gonna know, if we gave you, if we gave you a part-time code officer right now, how are you gonna know what he's doing?
He's gonna get on BAS and he'd work in the office.
These part-time police officers are gonna be in your office. They're gonna be under you. They're your employee.
So, we need to have like...
They're not part-time police officers when they're working for you. You're not getting this.
So, they need to have access to BAS. They need to have vehi, access to a vehicle. They need to have...
Same as if you hired a, a part-time code enforcement officer. Same thing.
Because a part-time code enforcement officer, you could probably get for fifteen dollars an hour. We're gonna pay a part-time police officer twenty-two dollars an hour.
Guys, it's not...
They're not working as a police officer. They're working as a code enforcement. They would get paid what the salary is for that job.
But Shaun's saying that he still needs them as part-time police officers.
And when they work as a part-time police officer, they work under that hat and under that pay scale.
You don't understand.
Why is this so hard to understand?
Because he's saying you're not pulling them away from being...
So, they're gonna be appointed as part-time code officers as well.
Correct. Correct. It would be two completely different job titles.
Yes, right.
I did it for three different job titles when I worked here.
We're talking about the same thing, basically.
Except that we could give you potentially ten people immediately.
Code officer and part-time police officer.
I was part-time police officer and, and part-time Bay Castle.
Right.
Okay. So, so they're gonna do both within the seventeen and a half hours a week that they're allowed to work? Or they're gonna be working thirty-five hours a week?
I'm sorry. I didn't hear the first part.
So, they're gonna be working seventeen and a half hours a week, or thirty-five and a half hours a week?
The only thing that we have to certify...
Well, well, we'll settle the...
The only thing we have to certify is that, uh, their salary does not get reported to the, uh, retirement system as police salary.
So, we're talking about hiring the existing...
And that's what the county has to figure out.
Police officers as part-time code enforcement officers.
Yeah, but they can't be, they...
So that you have them immediately, however that works. I don't know how that works. That's a big question. But, so you have immediate access to people.
To bodies.
To bodies. You can't, you're not doing three hundred at a rate, what'd you say, two or three a day you're getting?
Yeah.
You're not doing, if I hired two part-time code enforcement officers at a rate of two or three a day, you're still behind the eight ball. It's not gonna happen. I hire one full-time person at two or three a day, you're still behind eight ball. You throw ten cops slash code enforcement officers at it, you might get a chance to get ahead.
All right. So, we're gonna talk to the chief about it and see what we can do. Yes. And then we'll report back, and, and then we'll give you what that...
And that's...
We'll give you the dollars and cents of both options and the availability if...
And they may not wanna do it.
They may not. Okay.
But that can't happen, what I said, because it happened to me. When I ran a teen center and a police officer, my teen center salary was not reported to the, to the state as police salary. They can do that.
Right.
So, it's not hard to do. Rothar can do that.
Just, I just wanna clarify one thing real quick that you said before, John. You said a police officer is a police officer twenty-four hours a day.
He is.
Only if they're full-time. A part-time police officer is not a police officer twenty-four hours a day. Only when he's on duty. So, when he's off-duty, he reverts back to civilian status. So, that makes a difference in terms of what you said, yeah.
Okay. So, now, this...
Richie wanted to say one last thing. Richie's gonna finish this up.
I just wanted to say, when I first started here seventeen years ago, okay, we had two part-time housing inspectors, which is Walt North and Jack Weary. They were exclusively doing rental housing. And myself and Matt White were doing the code enforcement. Back then, we had a hard time keeping up, but we did.
And I bet your numbers were way less back then.
And the numbers were way less. The town has grown it. Twenty-five percent.
Especially the rental problems.
Fifty-eight's boomed.
That's our biggest.
Commercial stuff.
Financial impact.
You know, just keep that in mind, because we took on the rental housing.
You didn't really have rental housing back then. You really had no code back then.
Oh, that was, when I came in...
We did. We had, but not, not, not nearly what we have now. It's tripled at least.
Lost in check. I know, so you remember.
But if you get five...
You didn't have a rental code like you have now.
But if you get five or six...
We had eight hundred plus rentals. Now, we have like fifteen hundred.
You're gonna have men doing it. Or females.
All right. So, we're gonna, we're gonna sit down. We're gonna group, think about that as an option, see what the financial benefit or not is of it, and then we'll, we'll come back with it.
Okay, yes. Okay.
So, now, this periodic inspection module, um, Rich has done, has analyzed what it actually takes him to do the rental inspections, and thinks that this would probably save a significant amount of time to his schedule and to Nicole's schedule, as far as having the IPS access in real time to report inspections, report violations that the town attorney's office could, from the minute he enters it, while he's in someone's house, taking pictures with the tablet, with the periodic inspections, the file is automatically updated. It's not going out in the field, doing an inspection, coming back to the office, entering the information into the computer, printing the violation reports, following up on it.
Okay, we get it. You have to find someplace where there's eighteen thousand dollars in the budget that it's not being spent, because it's not budgeted. So, go to, you're going to really have to go to, uh, Lori Pipchinsky and commandeer eighteen thousand dollars out of her budget, IT budget, because where am I getting this money?
What about the money that is being generated that wasn't accounted for on the budget as far as income for the violations in the Supreme Court that the town attorney's doing?
We do have a budget line for income from that.
So, what if it exceeds that? Can we take the money from there?
Then you can't do, then at the end of the year, if it exceeds it, you could buy this.
But what if it exceeds it today?
Doesn't, that doesn't, the budget doesn't work on a three-month schedule. The budget, and code enforcement, and this is the biggest fallacy out there. Code enforcement doesn't pay for itself, and I don't expect it to pay for itself. It doesn't pay for itself. Code, just the bodies are half a million dollars a year.
It's quality of life.
And that's right. And I don't expect it to pay for itself. So, you can't put a price tag on it. But you can't sit here and say code enforcement's gonna pay for itself.
I, I would never argue. I would say that, that it's...
No, I'm saying they bring in money.
Yeah.
Okay. South Hampton and East Hampton bring in millions of dollars, uh, under code enforcement.
Well, they have, they have a full patrol.
What? They do, they...
They have five or six people.
They do. That's what I'm saying. But they, he says it doesn't pay, but if you have, if you bring in millions of dollars, it has to be paying for something.
There's, there's a way to make it more, like, it's, you know, it's a, it's a loss leader.
But it's quality of life, and it's the most important thing we need to deal with. So, Jody, talk to Lori Pipchinsky, see if she's got eighteen thousand dollars in her budget to do this, because she's the one that has software money. And if she does, we'll do it. But know that, that she's not getting eighteen thousand of something.
Okay. So, June thirtieth, you said we were going to look at where our numbers are and what your projections were, and whether or not we were meeting them, and then we would make a decision June thirtieth.
I didn't say June thirtieth, as I recall. I thought it was the end of the year.
You said first quarter.
The end of the quarter.
Yeah.
First half. Well...
You said first quarter, but we'll wait till June thirtieth.
I, I... Guys, what are you not getting? Jody, we put a whopping two hundred and eleven thousand dollars in reserve. That is great. We haven't done it in twenty years. We overspent the budget already by a hundred thousand.
And we took in two hundred and twenty-five thousand that we weren't expecting to take in.
Exactly. And you've spent half of that already.
Okay.
And it's already, it's not even halfway through the year. And you've spent half of that additional revenue that came in. So, what I'm saying is, there's computer software money in Lori's area. Use that money, because that is budgeted money for computer software. And then, we know we didn't exceed the budget because computer software money, this is computer software, that's computer software. We take it out of that budget line.
So, we can talk to Bill?
Yeah.
And regards to that?
Right. You got it? You have to take it out of the line that it belongs from, not hoping that there's gonna be additional money that comes in. Because, Lord have mercy, I don't know, you know, the rest of the gas boy system could fail, and we just have to spend another hundred thousand dollars on it.
I'll also, I, I have a question here. It says, uh, uh, fire and, and, and periodic inspections. Is that just a fire, or is that...
No, it's, the, the, the fire marshal is not connected to the IPS system right now. They have access to it, but they're not connected to where they can actually log in their reports when they go out on a fire and they see a basement that's been occupied. Um, so, they can't go in and actually log their complaints in where Dawn and Rich can see that they've already gone out and looked at this house. With that fire module comes the periodic inspections, because the fire marshals have to do these periodic inspections.
It's just for the fire, though.
No, he can use it.
No, everybody can use it.
Everybody can use it.
Everybody?
Yeah, it's the same system. Periodic inspections will help us with the rental, the rental end of it.
Okay. This is something that's gonna save time for you.
Yes.
It's gonna save time for us and the fire marshals.
Okay.
I just thought, when we got the BAS code system, we got everything. How many more of these things do we have to add on to make BAS actually work?
It was the fire marshal, and then we're looking at the town clerk, and we're looking at the tax receiver's office.
I'm looking at the tax receiver, because the John Kennedy and Assessor's Department has not...
I spoke to him about that. It's a couple of years down the road. And we need to get off the mainframe. And we can't get off the mainframe unless we get something for the tax receiver's office.
That's a separate question.
Now, do we, does BAS, uh, do we have BAS that's capable of all these offices to handle this?
We have.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
In your office.
What happened with that code enforcement thing that we got from the state that they're working on?
The one that, the, the grant that came through, we looked at it, and it's more tabular and information collection.
It's an analytical software.
It's not for code enforcement, so we opted not to pursue that.
But when we first ventured out into this computer software for code enforcement and for building and planning and fire marshal, building, planning, code enforcement are on the IPS system. Then, there was the fire marshal module with the periodic inspections. There's the workflow module that we're still looking to get, the town clerk that we're still looking to get. And whether or not tax receivers does it, you know, we're not sure. Um, Shaun, because I know that you're interested in working on a consolidated plan with the comptroller, John Kennedy, but we can't get off the mainframe. Twenty-seventeen was our goal to try and get off the mainframe, but because a lot of things didn't happen and couldn't happen because of our budget.
I don't remember it being a goal, but the goal to get off the mainframe's been forever.
Right. But the IT committee meets...
This doesn't bring us closer to getting off the mainframe. This doesn't. This takes us further away, because this is money. To get off the mainframe's a quarter of a million dollars. So, every dollar we spent on stuff like this takes us away from getting away from, off the mainframe. This is not on the mainframe.
If you, if you look at it that way, I look at it as, the more violations that we get cleared up, the more fines that we're bringing in, I think this eighteen thousand dollars will be paid for easily. Um, that's just my opinion.
I'm sure, does the board wanna pay, buy this?
Well, the only thing I want you to do is look at these notes.
Okay.
And make sure that we are, are okay with all these notes, because if we're not, then it's gonna increase our, our costs.
Okay.
So, you have to look at these notes, because we have to have this, we have to have that, we, you know, so, I mean...
But the, but the mainframe, every two years, we're paying about eighty thousand dollars to upkeep the mainframe. So, to me, that's just...
This doesn't have anything to do with the mainframe, Jody.
I get it. But this will save Rich and Nicole time in doing their inspections to where they can clear up some of those other violations, and it will also keep, put the fire marshal on.
Remember what Dick said, when the cup of coffee, when you sell the cup of coffee, stop. You sold the cup of coffee.
Okay.
Just go talk to Rothar about how...
Would there be grant money out there for this?
That's what the other thing was.
Is that a possibility?
We'll have to look.
Okay.
I know. Ask the new...
Right. That's why I'm mentioning that.
Okay. All right, that's good. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Who says this isn't an escape room?
Thank you.
Thank you. Stop Day, Dillingham.
Rich, you wanna high five now? Should we wait? We don't want to just wait for him.
Where's Dillingham go?
He was here, he was here.
Good, well, I guess stop day, then that's it.
Thank you.
DeWambers. Where's McCormick?
I think we beat code enforcement to death, because I don't think we really have to have the conversation now.
But they, I'm telling you, in his eight-hour day, this'll cut his nine-year.
I might as well have McCormick come in, we can jump in.
And I, I talked to him about it. I totally agree. Totally agree. That, that, oh, I feel bad.
We got it when we spent the fifty grand.
Oh, there he goes.
Drew Dillingham.
Stop Day.
Don't you just love it?
Yes. I do. We, we added a couple of extras this year.
That's this month.
Yeah, that's in May, right?
Yep.
Is Ernesto wearing the same shirt today?
He is not.
Oh, was it May?
May thirteenth, though, Drew.
I'm happy I can entertain you with our clothing. There are three events this year. May thirteenth, August twenty-sixth, and October twenty-first. And each event is eight to three, and CAP is there as well from eight to three.
Collecting prescriptions?
Yep. So, the gist of it is, stop day, stop throwing out pollutants, we take household pollutants and electronic waste.
Printers, computers, TVs.
The categories, automotive products, household products, lawn and garden, unused medications, electronic equipment and other products.
Paints, not latex.
So we take things from automotive, such as AC refrigerants, body putty, brake fluid, carburetor cleaner.
Batteries.
Degreasers, gasoline, oil additives, waxes and polishes, car and marine batteries. Lead acid batteries.
And used oil.
Um, household products. Yes, we do take used oil. Adhesives, all cleansers, driveway sealer, fluorescent bulbs, lead oil-based paints, mothballs, paint thinner strippers, stains and varnishes.
Mothballs.
Kerosene. Kerosene and medication. With the unused medications, um, no liquid medications, syringes or needles. Lawn and garden, fungicides, herbicides, insecticides, pesticides, rodensides. And then the others are aerosols, alcohol, arts and crafts, non-alcohol batteries, rechargeable, that's important. Lighter fluid, mercury, mercury vapor lights, photographic chemicals, solder material and swimming pool chemicals.
What are you supposed to do with fluorescent lights?
Fluor, fluorescent lights? Stop Day.
That's supposed to go there.
Yeah.
You said fluorescent, was I?
Yeah, you said it.
Did I zone out?
You zoned.
Sorry.
A lot of people ask me, with computers.
All right, I'm getting there.
No, but you, you have to take, you take the, the.
Ink out of the printer.
The drive?
The, the drive out?
Take everything. It's electronic parts.
No, no, the, the.
No?
No.
If you don't want anybody to find that computer and start it up and access all your information, you smash the hard drive with a hammer.
I would smash it. Pretty good, yeah, yeah.
That's what they ask me.
I wouldn't drop it off there intact.
No.
So we take computers, cell phones, DVDs, VCRs, televisions, stereos, portable radios, printers, scanners, under a hundred pounds. Video game consoles, handheld video games, cable or satellite receivers. And we don't take explosives, medical waste or commercial industrial.
We take televisions, all right?
Take televisions, yep. If they're containers, they've gotta be sealed and labeled, so the, so MXI knows what they're taking. And medication has to be in the original container or plastic bag.
Best way to do it, read it all and then pass it out. And Drew, this will be on the website.
I don't want you guys reading it while speaking.
This will be on the website, Drew.
What's that?
This will be on the town website, though.
Thank you.
Maybe Larry could put this on twenty-two also. I know he's.
Take pharmaceuticals, huh?
Once he gets it up and.
John.
The pill containers.
The what? Oh, yeah, we have nothing to do with that. That's CAP.
Yeah.
What it is, is that, there's a group that, that takes the containers and the, the plastic containers, the pills come in and stuff, and they send it to a third world country to use.
Oh, really?
So, but that has CAP.
Throw them out.
I didn't know what they did when they destroyed the drugs, what they did with those things. So the fellow that's gonna, is handling this is gonna go see CAP, because they're the ones that, that get these and see what they, and they can work something out with CAP.
Yeah, I, I always wondered what happened with that, because, you know, after I had my knee surgery and I had the Percocets and I, I didn't take them, but then I turned them into the police department, but it's like trying to rip the label off so that your name's not on it, so that if somebody comes up with the container and goes, oh, Percocet, in this house, for Jody. You know, let's go there.
If you take a black marker, some people take black markers and just go over their names a couple of times.
I, I never get, I never throw out my Percocets.
To get out. But yeah, so I, I instructed him to see CAP, talk to CAP, and see if he can work something out with CAP.
Okay.
So.
Drew?
Okay.
Thank you. Are you done?
Oh, no, not even close.
Oh, Lord.
Not even close. Thank you for that. Going right under the bus. So last May event, we collected forty-four thousand pounds of hazardous waste, and last October.
Really, forty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-eight.
Okay. And last October, it was around thirty-one thousand pounds.
Nice.
First event, ten thousand pounds of electronics, second event, same thing, and MXI's quantities were thirty-five thousand and twenty-one thousand.
I'll tell you what, this is a great program. People lined up there an hour before they opened the gates. I mean, it's amazing how many people come to these things to get rid of their, and they're slowly getting rid of their drugs also when they come in.
They just wanna see Drew.
So I mean, I, I, that's why we extend the three days instead of two, to give them an opportunity.
I think the most encouraging thing is that people aren't just throwing them in their regular trash, and they're not, they're actually taking the time to do the right thing with it.
So we get two to three hundred cars per event, so we'll see what the extra event does to that.
Hope, yeah, hopefully, well, I, I expect.
Whether it's spread out or whether it's more people.
Expect the first and the last to be the most. Probably the middle one will be.
A bunch of stuff.
Before Drew down there cleaning up with the pills.
Just got back from Florida, just getting ready to go back to Florida.
So you guys wanna hear about our out-of-pocket expenses?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know, I don't care.
Go ahead.
You don't care?
No.
Couple years.
We'd just like to know, so somebody else.
Thirty-yard roll-off, that's for latex paint and household batteries. Overtime, E-green, um, we pay, we pay half of MXI, the other half gets reimbursed and advertising. So the first out-of-pocket expense in the May event was around twelve thousand dollars. And in the October event, it was just over twelve thousand dollars for a total of twenty-four thousand dollars out of pocket for the year.
For both the bets. I think that's, that's remarkable for what we're taking in and what we're saving in the environment.
And that's with the grant money.
Correct.
Against that, and so now the third, the third stop day is costing us a little, twelve thousand or a little over twelve thousand, which is why I said I wanted to use that money for code enforcement or for the software.
Yeah, let's see what it is.
Well, we're saving the environment, so I mean, it, you know, it's not much to save the environment.
Saving the environment two days out of the year.
And, uh, of these pollutants.
Checking off eighty-eight thousand pounds a year out of the.
Okay, so here's the, I'll give you one breakdown for the May event, for what was collected. Fifty-five gallons of antifreeze, four hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty pounds of lead acid, acid-led batteries.
I don't know why people bring them in. They're worth money.
Seventeen hundred pounds of pesticide, three thousand, three hundred pounds of bulbs, fluorescent bulbs. Hazardous paint, twenty-two hundred gallons. Ha, household hazardous batteries, fifty-four hundred pounds, fifty-five gallons in pesticides.
That's regular batteries, correct?
Yes.
Household batteries.
Non-rechargeable.
Right.
Ten pounds of mercury.
Wow.
Other electronics, six thousand pounds, and other hazardous waste liquids, fifty-five gallons.
Now, you said in the, in the, in the dumpster, that you're putting auto batteries. I thought that they kept that separate from highway.
No, not auto batteries. Household batteries, that are non-recyclable.
Oh, okay.
Or non-rechargeable, rather.
Okay.
Yeah, those, those get landfilled or thrown out.
So that event costs sev, uh, seventeen-six.
How can you tell the difference? With household batteries, that, which ones are dangerous?
Most of them say rechargeable on them, if they're rechargeable. Most of them say rechargeable, if they're rechargeable.
What? No, no, not the recharge, regular household batteries. How can you tell which ones hazardous and which ones are not hazardous?
All household batteries, except for rechargeable, can be disposed of as ha, as solid waste.
Oh, like everyone?
It's the type of the.
Rechargeable are usually nickel cation or Ni-Cads, and that's where.
Yeah, so why do we have this container here? For batteries, huh? And you didn't wanna sort them out, and you didn't want, no, no, we took it away, because you said you're not sorting.
It's still there, is it?
We put it back.
Yeah, you put it back. Yeah, you did.
So there, so the, the, the big secret is that the household batteries just go in the trash, and we still sort out the Ni-Cad, the lithium, the lead acid batteries, and they go, that's just waste. Program.
Second event, there was no antifreeze.
Really?
Yep, no antifreeze. Six hundred pounds of automotive batteries, a thousand pounds of pesticide. Seven hundred pounds of bulbs, which is over twice the last one.
Did they still put antifreeze in cars? Are you talking about bulb testing? And don't, you can't get that bulb anymore. I didn't know if they did that.
Sixteen hundred gallons of hazardous paint, three hundred and twenty pounds of household hazardous batteries. Two hundred and seventy-five gallons of pesticides, twenty pounds of mercury.
Where's all this mercury coming from?
Yeah. People bring in thermis, thermostats.
Right.
And there are other devices that have mercury in them as well.
So they're weighing the whole thermostat, not just a little bit of mercury in the thermostat.
Yeah.
Sounds like kid who's.
They say twenty pounds of mercury.
Played with that all the time. It was a lot of mercury.
Any questions?
No, no questions. Drew, thank you. You are awesome.
You got to wait for the E-Waste, but now, I'm just gonna point out that E-Waste is open. If she's really mad, he'd be doing the stormwater reports right now. So people that have a television now or, or, or computer, they, they can go to the, the yard waste now.
They can interest, they can make it short.
Oh, yeah, except tell all people where they can go to.
See what I'm saying?
He sold us the cup of coffee.
These guys want me to say some one more thing?
I never, I never, I, I never knew that.
Poor Diane, she's like, what?
You guys can pick, anyone can pick up electronic waste at yard waste, or rather dispose of it every day.
Nice.
So that's always there.
That waits, uh, for six months, most people drop it. It wasn't all come that one day.
Oh, that was one day.
That was in addition to.
One day. We throw those trailers up to the top, those containers.
Wow, wow.
And brought like six TVs to that rental, to our.
I don't think those TVs aren't like they used to be.
Next weekend. At thirty inches. May thirteenth.
See them all the time.
I know.
Yeah, they don't take them. Our guys don't take them.
No, no, should they?
And our guys do tag them. I think, I don't know if our guys do or the garbage. McCormick, you ready?
Dan, how are you? Good morning, Dan.
What do you got?
Update on the emergency alarm program?
Oh, this looks like we might have made money.
Yeah, yeah. Here we did. Here's, here's the computers right here.
Don't get that, get that started. Don't get that started.
So I asked Bill Rothar to run the numbers yesterday for today's update. You'll see the updated numbers concerning present fees and charges that were received by the Town of Riverhead regarding the program for each and every year going back to two thousand and twelve.
Yeah, that's when it was started.
Well, that's when we started implementing. The thing was on the books for years.
Well, actually, two thousand and eleven went online, but late two thousand and eleven.
Went online, yeah.
Twelve is the first year it was fully implemented.
Yeah, there was an earlier code, but it wasn't enforced.
Institute it to get it going, so I know it was back in two thousand and eleven.
Yeah, but Tim Buckley did an earlier code.
Well, Tim Buckley was the one who was in charge from the police department, yeah.
God rest his soul.
Yes.
All right, that's wonderful. Four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and we've made forty-five hundred dollars as of May third.
Yes.
Which is good, because you see that the, that the numbers are coming down and that people are coming into compliance, Dan, so good job.
Thank you.
Because.
Also, the police department, obviously, is.
Yeah, but then police calls are being brought to these, in the fire department, get out of bed, go, and the alarm goes off, and they're not having to do that anymore.
Well, actually, some of this fees goes for the fire mar.
Fire marshal.
Because I want to pay up their fee so that we could hire the extra man.
As long as we can tie in so many things for the fire department. Those change, run two or three times a day on those alarms. But they go to the wrong places that this doesn't cover, and I think we should cover it.
All right, what else you got?
Thank you. Secondly, in the interest of making the program more user-friendly and efficient in terms of personnel and operations, I met with the police department last week. We had a wonderfully productive meeting in moving forward with the program concerning frequently asked questions. Those questions are now online, prominently displayed on the town's website on the menu page, so kudos to Terry for doing that in an expeditious manner.
Kudos to you for doing it, writing it.
Thank you very much, but it was a collaborative effort with the police department.
Yeah.
So, kudos to them as well. I, I feel going forward, there's gonna be much more.
Kudos to the town board, too, for an act, you make legislation.
Absolutely.
Thank you all.
No doubt about it. I also, I revamped the registration form, as well as the, you know, alarm affidavit, which are also now online. So the goal is to cut down on phone calls and dialogue between the permities and the town. The new online documents are gonna help tremendously with that. Because I also tied in the FAQs into the invoice letter, so every permitee will now have that access through our online database.
You know what, um, would be, I think, a good idea, is when somebody goes into the building department to fill out a change of use, with their changing a res, a, a store from, you know, a shoe store to a clothing store, that their, that form be included in their packet to be returned with the building permit application, so that you know who the new owner is.
It's actually, it's a great, it's a great point, Jody. We're also tying in through the fire marshal. So their permit application is now gonna include a section as a condition of the permit process, that they register with the police department on this program. So we'll capture all those folks in the transition from one business to another, but most importantly, for new businesses at Town of Riverhead. We have a notification procedure directly to those, so that is an excellent point.
Because I, I, I was speaking to somebody that was here the other day that came to see you, where the previous tenant had like a five thousand dollar false alarm fee, and then they came to you and said, I wasn't even there then, why am I still getting this bill? So I guess we're working through those kinks also.
That is correct.
Okay. Are we, is it in our code that we can go after the previous tenant for the money, or?
We can, but on a case-by-case basis, it has to be examined, because unfortunately, in a lot of these cases, the businesses are defunct, there's no money there. So if we chase them, we're gonna be expending taxpaying money to go after them. At the end of the day, we'll get a judgment that we can't enforce.
Yeah, I think.
So on a case-by-case basis, we're examining those issues.
We should look at them and see if we have to write them off. If, if the business goes under, you know they don't have any money. That's why they're going under. They're not making any money, so to get a judgment and keep it on for ten years and then renew it after ten years, it could be costly and timely, you're not getting any money.
Yes.
But how do we?
We gotta look at.
How do we write those charges off if you get a new tenant in the building?
So what we do is we expunge their record, the previous record of the former business, we wipe the slate clean, we start the new business entity at zero. We ask for their registration fee, and then we go forward with that company at that point.
They have to come in and give the registration fee and register with it.
How many people do you think use the word expunge?
Only lawyers. Only lawyers.
I think that's, I think it's a perfectly valid word, but I don't think anybody at this table besides you and I would use that word.
Swigward does.
Only lawyers.
Or Magic, thank you. What else you got?
Three things. Moving forward, we have several more goals, though. One of the things I'd like to implement is an online email notification system. A number of the corporate entities, specifically at Tang or in other locations, have asked that their corporate accountant offices receive email notifications. This way, it takes the local store out of the loop and the manager on site. We bill directly to the accountant's office nationally. Most of them are out of state.
Right.
And then they can timely send in the payment directly, so we're working on that. Secondly, I'd like to have an online payment system akin to what we do with EVO through the tax receivers office as well, whereby they can go on, review their account documents, and then pay directly, thereby freeing up the personnel time.
Better not come in here.
That's correct, in the police department or in the town attorney's office. So that's the second thing that we're gonna be working on. And then, in general, eliminating some of the invoice numbers. In the event somebody doesn't pay timely basis, that is confusing to them, so we're working with our database company to try and make the form itself a little more user-friendly. So those are the three things we're working on at this point.
Good job.
Nice.
Okay.
Okay. Very good.
Was that short?
About a month ago. I didn't notice. Sorry.
And before you leave, can I ask you to...
Fuck, I probably just broke his heart. Let me give you a hug, Dan. Come here, Dan, let me give you a hug.
Give me a hug. Oh, God.
Oh, Lord. There's an issue with this show?
I'm not hugging you.
I accept that. Thank you.
What are you pumping anywhere in your system in here today?
Before you leave here, when, when someone calls you
I was mean to him the other day.
And hits number one on this new machine we have, what phone does it go to?